Okay, uh it's ten oh four AM. We're going to begin this work session in Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you everyone. Okay. Special meeting Monday.
Also, we're talking, well, I think that y'all get to pick that.
What time?
So we're gonna reschedule one of the interviews scheduled from Thursday. Hopefully do a special on Monday.
How long is the meeting?
So I think that's up to you. The interviews are scheduled for forty-five minutes. A little bit of extra time for conversation if you need them. So I think you can expect about an hour.
And these, uh, is this all three of us now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Monday.
Nine thirty, ten thirty? Nine to ten? Ten to eleven?
Getting the meeting ready.
I think ten to eleven would be.
Can we do it earlier?
I like earlier.
I think you could.
Okay, great.
Um.
Six AM?
The human will be traveling about two and a half hours.
Uh.
But everybody gets up at four AM, right?
Yes.
This does, cuz I hear a walk by my house every morning.
Cackling.
Traveling.
I love cackles.
There was a loose dog on your street, anyway. It's like an orange cattle.
Yeah, no, this is not white house across the street. They like sometimes.
I don't know. How can I do that? Is that really? Let's do nine.
At AM?
Nine.
Nine.
Excellent.
I'm sorry they have to drive, but we're pre-struck.
Hey, we're good.
It will show, um.
Forty-two.
Yeah. That meant determination, strength.
Mm-hmm.
Stick across county line, it'll be like.
Yeah. It's supposed to snow, isn't it? A weekend?
Sure will.
Yeah, winter's coming back, thank God.
It's sure gonna be snow.
And like a lamb?
So I think you have to stop sharing. Go back into team, to share with whatever you want.
Top forecast for this weekend to the following week. There will be snow. But zero model consensus on when or how.
Ooh. It's fun.
Yeah, on the details of each system.
Is that open still?
So, yeah, Saturday to Sunday. Low to moderate accumulations. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Additional is likely with low to moderate accumulations, nothing crazy.
I'm into this.
Perfect. So now we're talking. This was a part of our plan all along.
So this is our kind of outline for the year of like Evergreen events and, um, town hall opportunities and social, it's kind of more of just make you look at and plan stuff.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But, um.
So y'all have a lot of agency in this. This is kind of what Lori and Sammy and myself have talked about. We really try to use tools that are out there, like different holidays, months, and tying in also to the areas that y'all are interested in growing, developing, and supporting. So you have the agency to be like, nope, nah. But I think this is a really good place to start. Hopefully.
This is gonna live on a, like, separate Outlook calendar. So I can share that with you if you wanna see it on your calendar.
Can we do something absolutely crazy, like the Onion style for April polls? On our website?
Yeah. So we do have a regular meeting and I think there's a lot of opportunity there that day. Part of good thinking. Um, so I think what Sammy and I's plan today is kind of go through April, May, June. So y'all get a feeling of what we're thinking about. Y'all can give some feedback on that and we can talk about some of the major highlights. And then we have some additional initiatives that are kind of on the side that we'd like to talk about as well. How does that sound?
Sure.
Great.
Okay, so these are things that we know about. Um, this is the reminder for me that the Cooper shuttle ends this weekend. Um, this is just kind of there if you wanted for animal shelter update. I know the IGA expired in March. Um, this.
Today, right? Or no?
Next Monday, yes.
Next Monday, yeah.
Next day, next day. This is, um, placed every two weeks. It's my reminder to post the regular meeting a week ahead of time. Um, we have the GAC, uh, comprehensive plan, it's doing like a storytelling competition. So this is the story submission deadline. And you guys can read, but, um, April is safe digging month, so I kinda wanna take that.
We, we need to do staff pet pictures.
Oh.
I think we do.
Actually, we can't cuz there are.
Um.
Cuz staff does.
There's no one on staff.
Uh, okay. Do all the fun things.
Or you left. Um.
Wait, um, Staff Pet Pictures, what, when's that?
So it's National Pet Day on April eleven.
Okay.
So we can take that time to post really cute pictures of our animals pet.
Have a little fun. Well, have a little fun.
Yeah.
Just so you know, my dog is super handsome and photogenic. I'll see, I'll see here where it's like dog and a huge field, uh, photogenic wolf hybrid.
Don't say pet day.
Yeah, prove it.
It's on. You guys are, you guys are so going down.
We have some pretty cute older creatures.
Could park on themselves.
We'll see you guys.
Prove it. I love prove it.
If you get the caption with that, you might. Might be a.
The commissioner is the cutest animal.
Um.
Or what you're gonna host the commissioner look like.
Oh.
Oh.
What?
Or do you like they, do you like they do at the Rockies game and have a picture, picture saying, is this a bear or Andrew Lee? And they sure. Just the beard.
Okay, I got that.
That's a morbid.
Um, so in April, we have an opportunity to do a town hall or maybe like more of a community connection of summer recreation. And Andy, I know you've been wanting to rename and dedicate the state, the skate park.
If I can find this guy's family.
Okay.
Um, I've got a couple new leads, um, of people in the community might know who his family is. I don't think it would be appropriate to rename the skate park in the person who planted the seed for funding for the skate park, um, and his memory if without reaching out to his family first.
Also, our summer recrea, we don't wanna like highlight that yet. I just think that our recreation department needs some help before we're ready to like really start pushing.
I agree.
So I think there's an opportunity if we wanna do something with the skate park.
Mm-hmm.
I know that you're very excited about winter recreations. We kind of have a parallel to that when it is the snow time again.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we are really happy to explore different ideas that y'all may wanna showcase if you wanna do a town hall. Or if this dedication pans out, we can just do something really rad and celebratory.
This is still April?
This is still April.
Yeah.
But all of this is flexible.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Nothing is set in stone.
We could still have another like month of power turns at this point.
Yeah. We could.
Skateboarding, smart suit.
So I do wanna mention in the safe digging month, uh, we've already reached out to Public Works cuz we really wanna showcase the work that they're doing. We also really wanna educate the community that we have a super short dig season. So I think this is gonna be, we really wanna make it fun. We really wanna make it educational. And we're really hoping that y'all like costumes.
Mm-hmm.
Like high vis.
Su- super short what season?
Dig season.
Dig season.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, like, how do you feel about high visibility vests and helmets? Word.
Oh, yeah.
Shovels.
Yeah.
I got one in my office.
Perfect.
What are we gonna do?
So in April, it's safe digging month.
Oh.
And we really want to showcase the work that Public Works is doing, some of the different community projects that are going on.
Yeah.
We, we wanna provide education about our digging season. Like, can't do it past October, sometimes pass up timber. But we'd really like to engage y'all with that.
Yeah.
And I think there could be some really cool opportunities to go in a backhoe, wear a cool helmet. And we can do little stories on it. We can take really nice pictures. So there's just a lot of, um, opportunity in that if you seem really excited, cuz I am.
To put us in a machine?
Oh, yeah. We're gonna put you to work.
No, I wouldn't do that. We should, we should do a county employee that actually does the work, showcase them.
We would like to do that as well.
I wouldn't be into staging myself in a machine. I don't feel comfortable.
I'll do it.
I'll put the note, Matt, no costumes or fun.
No costumes or fun.
Shove pants doll.
It makes people click, it makes people click on.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like, as somebody who's run social media, I totally get that it's like, it, it, to get somebody's attention is what you're trying to do with a photo.
Exactly.
So I'll put on whatever you want.
What if you had a fake mustache on?
Yeah.
Well, I know how to work a shovel. I could be the ground gun, you could be the machine.
I can work a backhoe.
Heck, yeah.
I could stage, you know, where you knock me over, push me in the hole.
It's it, I already talked about that photo shoot.
Yeah.
Done.
Or like leaning in a little bit to what's happening. Yeah, whole season.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, gosh, sorry, somebody driving.
That's, that's later on.
Oh.
Wow, Lauren.
I had it all really bad.
Will there, will it also be like? I hear that there's an education component to it.
Yeah.
Will also be like get on the schedule to get your locates?
Oh, yes.
Kind of thing, just so there's also like an action.
Yep.
Not just entertainment. Also, April is National Poetry Month. So we thought we could do a haiku contest with the school.
Awesome. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Excellent.
Moving on, May, we have, um.
No, 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 go back to April, please, and scroll to the bottom. So we have some great opportunities that April is National Finance Literacy Month. So we've chatted with Candace and we really wanna talk about how we're transforming Lake County government's finances, tying it to that month. Uh, Candace is a runner and we don't want this to feel stuffy. We don't want her like weather womaning and like talking. So I'm gonna see if I can convince her to just like run, cuz she's a runner. And then I'll sit in the back of the pickup and we'll film her just for like thirty second clips, like talking about finance. Cuz it makes her a human.
Yeah.
It makes her different and it's connectable. And I just think it'd be very fun.
Yeah, awesome.
I've done a lot of follow by stuff with filming. If you should try to find something that doesn't have an engine, cuz then if she's talking, you can hear better.
My husband has an electric motorcycle.
Perfect.
We're good to go, it's silent.
Yeah.
Or would she just record the garbage?
Are you working with him?
So we try, well.
Fun if she was like, wow, and this is what we're doing, man.
We're keeping up the finances over here at Lake County.
It's a lot of work.
We'll take her to a really low elevation. And of course, there's many different ideas, but we do wanna create that touch point.
Cute.
And we do wanna talk about it and I just, I want her to run.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just cuz I get out of breath walking up the stairs doesn't mean she can't jog and talk at the same time.
Other people.
Is she an ultra runner?
I don't know.
Just a runner.
She runs.
She's ultra. Really? Yeah. Okay.
Did you know Candace and I play soccer against each other in Arkansas?
Whoa. Cool.
We're in soccer camps. I also, so I know that we're talking a lot about external communications at this point, but I think it's also gonna be very important for us to talk about internal communications. You have a staff of one eighty plus or minus ebbing and flowing. And connecting with each of us, letting us know your present is gonna be really important. So April is stress awareness month. So I figure that's a really good touch point for y'all to think about how you wanna internally communicate with staff. Cuz Lake County government is stressful.
We should have looked at power by what we do to deal with stress.
We could do that.
What's that?
You guys can buy everyone the ice cubes.
Yeah.
We can have.
Yo. Yo.
A, a fun play day.
It's nice. There's silicone magnets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fun play day, what do you mean by that?
Fun play day? I don't know.
You get nervous.
I think that word is really important to have play in it as adults. I don't think we play enough, but it's how you build community. It's how you build culture. It's how you build connection when the days suck.
What about a paintball?
Very interested.
Wow.
Like Russian kids.
Left field and it's awesome. I'm not, I'm not county government against, uh, some of our constituents.
Ready.
Oh dang.
I would need the sheriff to check the ammo.
County versus city.
Yeah, really, yep.
Yeah.
Oh, there's so many more of us.
It's taking so much.
So I encourage you to kind of think about these themes. Think about how it ties and if you wanna present to staff and if there's a real opportunity for something in there. Or you'd be like, hey Liz, make a playdate. I'll be like, huh, done.
I'd just like to add on to that. I mean, I think given your letter to the editor acknowledging, like, my thoughts about how staff and like that they do a great job means a lot to people, more than I think either of you, like any of you understand, is staff hear what they read, what happens on social media, et cetera, and internalize that. And having the leaders of this organization so that they have their back makes a big difference. More so than like me or Tim saying something, so.
Yeah. Totally.
Those rules instantly make a difference.
Is that letter ever gonna get published?
They posted like half of it.
Oh, I don't understand why they edited it. I mean, Finn's got his hands full over there. I feel like he's single-handedly running the entire operation sometimes. Every article.
See.
Sammy, is that letter ever gonna get published?
Well, it was published on the website.
Oh.
And someone likes to republish it for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, they told me it would be published. It's not, um, it has not been yet. I have a few emails in to them.
So not this week, cuz we're we're getting away from publication.
Well, yeah, the deadline is Monday. Um, I sent it to him, you know, when you wrote it.
So you just want us to pay or?
No, I mean, they just let us know that we, you guys could each
Oh, okay.
Publish a letter and then we'll start the Commissioner Corner in May.
Hmm.
Um, it's hard to get in the mailbag.
Jeez, I'm already on to my second idea.
You couldn't also submit it and it'll be published next year.
What order were we going in? It was you, you, and last.
Elsa's next, next week, I think, Congresses do and then.
I'm due the eleventh.
Good.
I got time. I recommend reading to the last minute. Maybe the night before.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so May, same concept. Um, we have this exciting event with the library. Or two events in one day. Um, the Colorado Author. Um, we would like to start, it's May's fire department this month. So I'd like to start working with OEM and sheriffs and start kind of pushing emergency signups. I think it's a good time for a potential town hall with maybe the fire department, um, and Arwick and, um, maybe the Forest Service and kind of talking about their, uh, defensible space initiative. And Arwick is offering free chip removal. Um, so if people.
Sure. Um, for May, the board usually does a, their, uh, resolution declaring it wildfire month.
Wildfire.
So we don't know who, best of luck coordinating with the city so we can do both. Both do a resolu, both bodies do a resolution to get it out there farther for folks.
So these, uh, these, um, town halls, are they in the evening and where are they? This is just an idea now?
These are just ideas.
Okay.
And if you're like, yep, I wanna do that, then we start to put the pieces in place, talk to the right partners, talk to the right venues. I wanna have a town hall in our parking lot in the summer, cuz it's just so nice.
What about I, um, what about some more infographics? I feel like I wouldn't go to a town hall.
Yes.
On fire preparedness, but I would want the information.
Yeah, so if you look in the far right channel, we have the different, um, mediums or avenues that we want to use. And so within those, it's picking the right thing. And so inf- infographic is something that you mentioned and it's something that Sammy has really been double downing on.
Sweet. And I texted Chief McCann about, he had a flyer that some federal organization made that wasn't really like appropriate for local residents and homeowners. So we wanted to work together to make it more like action steps for homeowners and, um, highlight Arwick's free chipping removal program that they're doing. And then, um, defensible space infographic and seeing like zone one, zone two, and zone three.
And so Everbridge, that's the system that we use for emergency alerts. We really want to run a drive to up our subscription base. We also wanna make it a contest.
Okay, so if you're subscribed to Everbridge before this hypothetical town hall, then you're entered to a raffle to win, what, a fire insurance and a ride in the fire truck. Sweet. This is my.
Andy, I'm sorry, you can't compete in the contest.
No, I, I'm wondering what does the, uh.
Okay. I'm making up names.
Okay. In today's materialistic society, I'm wondering if there's any hard goods we could add to spice up the.
So we can always do a really rad Lake County government swag bag of the sweaters, the socks, and the different ephemera we've collected. So talking about goods, um, you know, if we really want like a canoe or a set of skis.
There you go. Mountain bikes, you know.
It is something we can definitely do. However, the fiscal implication of that, where are we gonna take the money? So if we're going to have high dollar items, we need to think about appropriately allocating it for the year.
What, um, was, what made me think of that was that is the, what is there an actual dollar value on having the full staff and equipment needed to do a ride along in the fire?
So that's a great question, but they are going out on calls and chores and we would partner and work with them.
Just an empty seat.
Yeah, last boom days, I got a ride in the fire truck from the college to here and it was probably the greatest gift I've ever received. If you wanna see the pictures.
No, it's okay. I'll take your word, but I trust you.
Yeah, so again, this is all conversations, making sure that it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, making sure that we can do it with insurance. If they're a minor, it has additional levels that we just need to check in and take care of. But we did figure out for a ride along in the plow, the winter before last, for a in the plow competition. Uh, and these are just experiences that you don't get to have every day. And I would say generally, gener- generationally, folks get excited.
You can take a picture in the truck too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right?
Yeah, a ride along, you know, if you're at the town hall or whatever you wanna call it, at all, you can.
Sign up for Everbridge and you can get a, uh, photo of you behind the wheel of the fire truck.
Mm-hmm. You can walk the horn.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
You can walk the horn?
Speaking of ride along, you ever reach out to education? No, I'm going to, we're gonna meet here this weekend. Oh, cool.
Uh, pothole naming contest? I wanna name my.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, so, I'm just gonna say no, sorry, that's, uh.
I love it.
We are really highlighting our lack of.
So.
Yeah, it helps.
We pair it with our road paving plan. And we do an infographic, we talk about it, we provide education, which is your favorite pothole in town. I like the one by the door, Penelope, so I'm gonna name it Penelope's Pothole.
I recognize that a lot of them are in Leadville, not Lake County.
Ooh, that one's in Leadville. Thank you for calling me out and I will provide that comment to the city. But we know that these are real issues. We know that people are very frustrated. So if we give them an outlet with maybe a sense of humor, that can help.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's putting a lot of, that's a lot of, big old spotlight on faith in people's ability to be reasonable, humorous. And, you know, I'm reluctant on that one, just gonna throw that out there. I would be too. Like, yeah. That's the one I blew my tire on, we're gonna, now we're gonna name it something. Yeah, and, and, yeah, just. It's a cute idea.
No, no, no.
The intention is admirable. You might be overestimating some people's sense of humor.
Also good feedback, though.
Yeah.
Well, in the end, how much do you care about what people think?
It might be a theme today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just offering, I don't care if we do it or not.
Yeah. I am functionally challenged by what we are able to fix and what we aren't.
Yeah.
I think reminding myself of that, uh, doesn't always feel great.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Um, so May, fire preparedness month, hopefully health and fitness month. I think biker day is in June, but there might be something there.
Can we have a bike to work week or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just like a, you know, one of those national holidays.
Yeah.
We did do a step challenge one year and people got really into it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's good.
Oh.
It was a very competitive staff.
Wow. It's like a, uh, employee, county employee summit of fourteen or day or something?
Yeah.
Um, so Mental Health Awareness Month, we can kind of link back to the, uh, funding available from Bill, Health, Bureau of Health through the month of June and other resources available to the funding residents. Um, June, same thing.
So in June, that's when we were kind of thinking about a mailer town hall residence. I think that's a really nice touch point cuz it goes to every single house in the community. So one of the areas that we were thinking is that this can be a moment for feedback, to get the heartbeat or the pulse or whatever you wanna call it. And that can help inform a town hall so that we're addressing what folks want to hear about from you. We did a mailer for the Summit Community Cares Clinic. That's how we got the information out there to folks. I would say that it was really successful based on the phone calls and appointments and other pieces that public health and that, um, organization received afterwards. So we could do something else with it, but I think that would be really nice. You could put some sort of language that you stand behind, similar to what you're doing in the, um, Commissioner Corners. But I think it provides a really nice connection with your voice to all the folks that live here.
From an environmental standpoint, mailers are, I don't like mailers, but I'm not, I'm not opposed, just out of, you know, that. Um, I would like to see what the, uh, actual results from the last ones were, if we had like the numbers or like.
So we can kind of look about when we sent it out about the Summit Community Cares Clinic and then what the response was in the next one or two months. Of course, it's just correlation, it's not causation, but I think we can make a strong assumption.
Call us how much paper was used versus how many actual responses we got. We have that kind of information.
Well, so we can tell you how much it costs to do the mailer. And it was specifically announcing the opening of the DHS Public Health and Summit Community Cares Clinic. So I think that we could look at use statistics in the next one or two months after that
Yeah.
to really tell that.
Maybe since we've got, that'll be a time where a lot of the people come back to Lake County who are snowbirds, like our retired community and or second homeowners. Like, that seems like an opportunity to get people to engage in the one community project.
Yeah.
If we're doing mailers, I'd rather not get survey. I don't want any surveys from the community. I do think that that's kind of max Andy's and my job is to have the pulse.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's my opinion. I'd rather share information, give our, give our residents like something crucial to their lives, not request info from them.
We could also share a link to a poll that we had on the website or something that people wanted to opt in.
That's what I think about the community, the one community project.
Yeah.
That's what we, I feel like that's what we as a county have said we want their input through. So I'd rather not like
Collate it.
Get more and not get more.
Buddy, go out and get one.
Um, another town hall opportunity could be legislative updates from veteran state, today they're in Hattie County. Um, this is June, um, I need to work. Um, this is the end of the quarter. I know you guys are gonna be wanting to do quarterly, um, town halls and meetings with the city. So that'll be the end of June. Um, I didn't get it too much further.
So we've looked at a couple months. I think you have a good idea of kind of how we're mapping it out and tying it out. We have actors and we wanna invite you to engage in a lot of these. Um, cuz it's just a really nice bridge between the staff and the community.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna share this spreadsheet with you so you can see it. And we will continue to populate it as items come up that we need to address or, oh, hey, that's a good idea. So this can be a continuous conversation with us. Additionally, um, we are going to build a calendar, an Outlook, so you can turn it on and off or overlay it off of your personal, but you don't have to have it on all the time. That's gonna have your Commissioner Corners. That's gonna have when we decide on town halls. It's gonna have the moments when we're asking you to do something, so you have a little prep for this.
Mm-hmm.
How does that sound?
It's fun.
Okay.
The, the fourth is on Friday? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I just have this really bad feeling in my gut about fire danger this year for some reason.
Yeah.
All that fairytale you said.
Well, actually, we're at nine.
I got five percent now.
We're, yeah, snowpack isn't a concern, it's more of just, I don't know what it is. We've had a lot of really rainy summers and I think we're, we're really due for a lot, um.
Driving.
It's like my magic eight ball, I don't know, but I just got this feeling that this is gonna be a bad fire year.
How much support our federal land management agency is gonna have in terms of mitigating, preventing.
Yeah.
Fire fires?
That's, I guess that's kind of what maybe is in the back of my head of like, even if it's a half bad year, the lack of resources to actually combat issues is gonna be compound, so, and the real danger.
Dan, Heath, Clarithon, the M, and the city and myself are all needing to just talk about like, what could this look like? If we had volunteer opportunities, who should be engaged? How can we engage the community to be proactive in, right, mitigation, defensible space?
Yeah.
If you wanted to volunteer to go out on Sundays to make sure, you know, people's fires were put out correctly. If you wanted to volunteer to go out on Sundays to make sure, you know, people's fires were put out correctly. Just to give the community a sense of control when we have no control, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any local tree companies we could kind of partner with to get like, find out what rates are for people to have trees removed that are? I drive around my neighborhood and I'm like, you know, that's why I walk out my front door and I'm like, tree, 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 tree. Like, I've gotta, I'm about to like buy spikes and start climbing my own trees and cut them down, cuz I'm like terrified of the summer.
So, we would like to really use May as wildfire preparedness month, to really
Get it early.
leverage every piece, get all the partners in the rooms, Lauren's talking about volunteer opportunities, all of that into a complete package that we can present, so action steps like Elsa said, also informative, like Sammy's working on. But then also, again, lending your voices to something that, quite frankly, is very possible and kind of scary. Actually, legit, it's scary, not kind of.
You can honestly make June everything in June, or May, um, about law, about fire mitigation.
Yeah.
And awareness.
So, I think that would be a good opportunity to bring partners together for a town hall, and that's kind of what I wanted to talk to you about next. We came up with potential ideas for every month, if that is something you all are interested. But having that moment, that touch point, the connection, looking and talking to the people of Lake County, I think is really valuable. So, what are y'all thinking for the frequency of having that at touch point?
Town hall once a month.
Town hall once a month, town hall quarterly, town hall bi-monthly. Once we know the frequency, we can work with y'all to identify the topics that you really wanna explore. But we also definitely wanna set everyone up for success.
Mm-hmm.
Every other month seems like plenty, to me.
Yeah.
And how often are they gonna cost as much as the first town hall that we kind of looked at doing? Where it was like, how like eleven, a twelve thousand dollar Christ Day going on it?
We can do no cost and low cost.
Okay.
Um, so, but, and it depends what you want. We can give out little Lake County schwag that we already have in stock, so there's just, um, you know, little wired fire pens, oh, that'd be so cute, and notebooks, little helmets. So, we have stuff like that already in stock, but thinking about the spaces we here, have here at Lake County that we can use for free.
Hmm.
Like?
Like Sixth Street.
Like the Sixth Street Gem, C M C will partner with us, and again, I really wanna do a town hall in the parking lot at Sunset, but anyway.
Sixth Street.
Hmm. Hmm.
Um, so there is human resources going in to set these up, but as external costs, we can do it free to know.
Okay, perfect.
I would go, I think quarter is plenty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Really, I don't wanna like force town halls, I also, you know, like Matt has said, the same people show up
Yeah.
for community engagement, it would have to be really specific and important to do a town hall, I feel like.
So, I would encourage you to, if you were interested in the fire one, we can set something up at Twin Lakes, cuz that's good community and very recent memory that's been affected by wildfires, they're gonna be interested.
Yes.
And then, I think that that is a really good approach that Tim and Claire took up once upon a time, is going to the communities and talking about it.
Yes.
I like Twin Lakes with the logistics, space, distance.
Well, you can stay at the, you can do the uh, the schoolhouse, they now have internet there, and you can, they can have Zoom link, um.
They can also be outside, yeah, the first.
We could be outside, it could be at the roadhouse, it could be at the inn, you know.
The second first.
Oh, that's a good one.
It, it's, you know, and.
Southern fire station.
Yeah, and when, um, so, first roadshow town halls was Twin Lakes, the Lake Ford Community, Mountain View, Trident Mountain Valley, and then the city of Leadville. But, you know, if you're thinking, you guys are a quarter in, you have a quarter under your belts, you know, all the things, so maybe in April you wanna have a, everybody. Here's what we know.
Hmm.
Or to show off your, I mean, show off your priorities, right, like this is the map, we had our work session retrieved.
Mm-hmm.
This is where we wanna go.
And or, we also talked about, I don't remember if it was us, we even talked about it, but um, even just allowing for like community Q and A's for town halls.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So people can actually ask the questions that they wanna be able to ask in public comment, or they wanna be able to ask all three of us, but they can't cuz it's not a public meeting. So, they're gonna, they're gonna be a specific topic, but there can also be time for like.
Yeah. Come onto the slot for that. Wait.
Any Q and A.
You know, Commissioner, leave your question because it's, you know, taking off of this, like, you know, mo- most of the space we can get or go to is free. It's gonna be, you know, the, the topic area and the staff you bring with. And there you go, that's, you know, but for a lo- a lot of these things can be very low cost.
Unless we did that, I'll stop, I'm not gonna say that.
Say it.
Nope. All I do is joke in here, I'm serious today, I'm serious.
Oh, got it.
Oh, yes, sorry, I'll take my question.
So much of our week is dead serious and, you know, stressful and problem solving. I even, I appreciate the brevity and the touches of humor, but this.
Hmm.
I don't know, I, I agree with Elsa, it should be topic specific and then.
I mean, maybe the Forest Service can talk about, you know, where they're at with funding.
Yeah.
And our way can share their stuff, and it can be the Everbridge sign up raffle, and make it really engaging, and get a picture in the fire truck and.
Yeah. I'm just imagining a town hall in my head now, I'm like.
Maybe we can call it something like that.
Might be busy that night.
That's what's gonna happen.
It'll be.
But generally, I mean, if you guys.
Did you just?
If you guys plan anything.
Did you say you might be busy that night?
Yeah.
I mean, can you imagine a town hall in your head, who's gonna show up and what's, what's gonna happen?
I went to most town halls when they were at freight for free.
Oh, you did?
And I loved them.
Okay.
So.
And if you generally.
I enjoy town halls a lot.
You generally will draw, you will generally draw the people intrigued by the topic.
Freight's a nice place.
It's expensive now, though.
That subject matter.
Right?
Right.
So if you're thinking fire, right, it's, you know, it might be people who live within city limits, but generally, it's like, right? The Four Seasons, right?
Secondhand.
Everyone down Mountain View pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, like, oh, shit, I need to mitigate my property, how do I do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And like getting people to sign up and.
Be hard, be team group economy, yeah.
I, I think it would be awesome, it would be helpful for me to see, um, not the whole calendar, how you're going to, how you're going to do it, but the topics for every month.
Mm-hmm.
Because knowing that we will be talking about, that you're, you all are thinking about talking about a certain topic during a certain month, would help me understand, like, okay, what is our full, what is the full communications coming out of this building?
Sure.
And where can we potentially bring some ideas about like, oh, I'm hearing this, oh, I think it'd be great if we leaned into this topic, et cetera. So, I love seeing all of this, it's really fascinating, but the, the main topics for each one should be helpful for me to give them back.
Yeah, this is fun for me, but.
Yeah.
Um, some other ideas that we had was that, you know the triangle sign out front?
Mm-hmm.
So, there's an empty side, and there's a side that C M C is occupying.
Mm-hmm.
And we are looking into making one of the sides, one of the sides is the transit, the Lake County Transit. So, we wanna make one that's kind of like connect with the B O C C and where they can find you, and we can talk about that.
Sweet.
And then another sign could be, um, changing every month with, cuz we know meeting, uh, topics ahead of time for April, so we.
I didn't realize that one side of that was empty.
I've literally never looked at it.
I.
I just.
Yeah, thank you for, for being the brave.
I know there's a third side.
One good venture for it, but I will join you there.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, no!
I, I've seen it like out of this part of my eye, and I'm like.
We.
Maybe that's a.
It's right there.
It's right?
Out in the yard, out on the sidewalk.
Here, it's in the yard.
There it is.
Maybe that's a good foreshadowing of how effective, looking effort into that sign would be, nobody's gonna look at it.
Glorious sign.
Oh, look at that.
Nobody's gonna talk to this.
I would counter that.
Do it.
People that walk by that every single day, they're gonna look at it, especially if we rotate it, so it's not stagnant.
Except, we just set up a sign code last night that will prevent us from putting wacky, wavy, flailing guy on the top of it to get you the attention.
Ooh, look at that.
That's okay, we were just gonna put you up there, like up on the shelf, and like, you're just like, hey, Lake County government, come on down.
She's just needed it.
I've definitely, I've, I've looked at the two that are, that are for the sidewalk.
Sign spinning?
The pedestrian, yeah.
Yeah, but it's the third that I've literally never looked at.
So, that faces the parking lot, so anybody coming in on the A D A access, that's gonna be in their direct line of sight.
Right. Yeah.
Hmm.
So, I do think the different angles hit a different, uh, part of the population.
Sure.
Depending on how they move.
Sure. Okay, that's what you wanna do, silly.
Love that, that's amazing.
These are topics I think people might be interested in, the rest are just kind of boring. Um, this was an example of the mailer that was sent out for the new Polycop building.
Mm-hmm. It's got some plus important info.
New and improved, with less radar.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Less, I didn't say no.
I think they can move back into the basement.
Okay.
Safe levels, so.
Yeah. Show the town hall flyer, we want them to start to imagine and be inspired.
This is my fire idea, it's adorable. Yeah, you just have to give the hooks, too.
Yep.
That would be lovely.
So, it sounds like our kind of action steps from this conversation is we're gonna map it out monthly in a simple document, so y'all get the major themes, so you know where to plug in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is also gonna kind of help if we're talking about quarterly town halls that don't feel forced, if there's nothing, there's nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this is kind of the area, um, in the calendar that would make sense to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of feels like y'all feel good about us starting to do the planning for a fire town hall, though. Okay?
Feel okay about it, I also just think that like, being clear about what we're going to, yes, the U S Forest Service will talk about all those things, but like, the the like whole media package around, around, um, this town hall, I think should get more explicit, so people under
Yeah.
have the motivation to come.
Mm-hmm.
Not just to receive information, but like, what are the consequences that we're trying to mitigate? What are the, what is the situation we're in now that we wanna be prepared for, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm down with this.
I wonder if you, uh, heard just for the fact of a fire, would you wanna talk to, like, kind of render amusements just on what their experience and when people get into homeowners insurance? On new homes, on new homes, like, if there really is that issue of like
Uh-huh.
how, you know, how folks can mitigate their properties?
Yeah.
I just read a headline news story the other day about people on the front range are starting to get dropped, and where their insurance premiums are like doubling and trickling. I think Boulder County was singled out, but.
And also, like, there must be other people from the state that we could ask, like, through C T S I or C C I, who could come to like, paint the whole picture of, this is what we're seeing around the West, and this is how it's impacting Colorado.
Yeah.
Which is why we're saying it in Lake County, just to kind of like contextualize that it's not just Lake County, but it's like, these are the larger factors.
Would there be an angle we could use to bring value to the attendees by like, here's, uh, negotiating strategies with your insurance company, or here's, uh, discount coupons for this tree service company, or, you know, things of that nature?
Mm-hmm.
If people actually come in the door, they get some value beyond what we're already offering?
Absolutely, I think your place for Sammy and I is to start talking to partners, see who's interested.
Mm-hmm.
And then from there, really shape it up, and make sure that there is that value, make sure there's the action, make sure it's not just like, hey, only you can prevent forest fires.
Right, yeah. And even people who aren't, like, maybe even people who live in, like, in the city, they could be impelled to like volunteer with friends of Lake County.
Yep.
So, it's not just, yeah, so it's the whole, it's the whole package, us taking care of each other, not just take care of yourself.
I'm sure someone from the Division of Insurance that regulates, right, homeowners insurance companies would be able to come to talk about new laws that they can pass this year, increasing protections or transparency, or just like that, like if you're having trouble getting where you're being dropped from homeowners insurance, if this is other options, or how you can do negotiations, et cetera, so. V O I, I think would be great for that.
Fantastic, so, like I said, we'll get this shared with you, we'll get the calendar overlay when you, um, have activities we would like you to be a part of. And then we will do the themes laid out, and we'll start having the conversations about fire. And when we kind of have something to talk about or some possible days, I think we'll circle back with y'all, just to make sure that we check all the boxes in our meeting. What y'all are thinking?
Thinking.
Oh!
The school?
The school!
Yeah. We wanna, um, engage with the school and see if there are any teachers or programs interested in civic engagement, shit.
This is the internship you were discussing previously, and we missed the deadline on that.
No, that's. Uh, for the internship?
Yeah.
No, that would be separate, this would be like, all ages, potentially, we have a email into something.
So. Yeah, so email Scott at the high school. I think it's really, we wanna gauge in the teachers or, and, and the schools' interest, we don't wanna create any extra work. We wanna create an opportunity, and it can be simple, like, it could literally be commissioners and storytime on the lawn, perfect. But it can also be something a little bit more robust, but we wanna create a partnership, we wanna create something successful. But for me, civic engagement is incredibly important, I, probably is for all of you as well. And so, creating that opportunity for developing minds to have that, giving them a positive experience, whether it is a semester-long project or still one-shot.
I agree with you.
I did too, I've had conversations already, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll follow up with you Elsa, cuz we haven't found an inn yet, any of you. Yes.
I tried it.
And I did, um, get the invite for Elsa, she's gonna go to the Colorado College of Student Government Association.
Yeah.
Uh, they are doing their big event this week, Lead Vegas, it's really rad, so once they're done with that, we can talk about some dates for that. Do y'all have any other thoughts or feelings you'd like to share this afternoon as we kind of parse all of this and come back with some different products?
I think your infographics to me are really crucial.
Got it.
Because if we think about like, the average reading level, that we should be presenting information to, I think a lot of what we discuss publicly is above that level.
Yeah.
And infographics can really help get back down to a fifth grade level, and I just, I would like to see the communications department really lean into that.
I like that. How many posts are we putting out, uh, per day, per week, whatever, on social media?
On social media alone?
Yeah, just Facebook.
Facebook, Instagram.
Facebook and Instagram, yeah, um. Usually at least one a week, during the week, weekends, I don't really like to.
How many views are they getting?
Um.
See that?
Yeah.
That's engaging, are people looking at it?
I think the Instagrams tells me that there's like, ranging from like eight to ten thousand viewers per month, or peo- or like accounts reached.
Is that right?
Um, I'd have to look at Facebook. I imagine.
Do we pay for that, so it just shows up on their scroll or?
People share and comment and stuff like that, so that helps.
Oh, I see. Well, that sounds attractive.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put my letter on Instagram.
You're Instagram official, we got you.
Um, I did recently make a housing needs assessment infographic.
Yes.
So, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, really cute.
Do this, please.
Yeah, can't log in on this computer, I'm blocked, but.
Okay.
Um.
Will you send it to me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I worked it Jackie a little bit to make sure that we got everything that we wanted to share.
Cool. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah.
Please.
Anything comes up, just let me know.
Um, yeah, you can pop to interview, cuz I hate the.
Resuming the work session with the B O C C.
Sheriff, do you wanna pull anything up, or?
No, it's.
Okay, um, all right. We are on to Sheriff Speckman and some existing and potential grants for his office.
Yeah, grants. Um, so first of all, thank you for your time for us to have this opportunity to kind of work through this, uh, through our grants, uh, situation. Visually wise, I was hoping to use the light, but you guys okay with that, it's all in there?
Yeah.
Really good.
I think the, uh, the week one, two, three, four, can we?
Yeah, those can come.
We don't have an eraser.
I do, my. I was gonna donate it to this house, but is there?
You probably use it, we have a tissue.
No.
There's a tissue or?
There's not tissues.
Hmm.
I can, I can do a stage.
Well, mine are, I should, it might be on there, okay, all right.
Do what you want, you get it, yeah.
All right. All right.
We're gonna.
We're gonna.
So. Sorry, I guess. Oh, blurring.
Why are you doing that?
Uh, it's been a couple days. I think it's due for a wash anyways. Uh, but to uh so really, I wanted to start off, just step back bigger picture wise. And you know, speak a little bit to um the sheriff's office in general, you know, where we were, where we're going, goals, you know, bigger goals. So, these grants are specific to staffing and personal. So, I came up with this uh really cool chart here to kind of give you an idea of where we're going. And you know, some reasoning why, you know, to start off with base level stuff, like when we look at our mission, you know, vision, values. Gives us that general direction. We have a ton of policies that we follow, of course, to uh make sure we're on the right path. But in general, we're a public safety service. Um, we have lots of statutory requirements that we're gonna make sure we're maintaining. So one of the best ways to get there is there's just too much for me to do as one person. You know, the sheriff has a lot of responsibility. So essentially, came into it with a vision of building a team. And starting from where I was when I was first appointed, uh which is kind of related to today, we had three deputies. Um, and to match each one of those deputies, uh also walked into uh three lawsuits. And, which by the way, I don't think you guys told me about that during the interview segment.
Sorry about that.
And and the reason why I bring that up though is uh, yeah, I was uh, yeah, I'm very grateful for Chris to kinda walk me through that process, but you know, just came with the name. Uh, obviously, it was me individually being sued. It was the title that came with that, so gladly accepted it. But there was a lot of touch points with grants, and so we do recognize that the the need for proper applications, proper management, so taking the part. And so, so this grant stay kind of, they they fit into the overall mission of where we're trying to go. Um, and then we also realize the importance of their management. So, I did break this up. Um, I started in uh twenty-three, and I just kinda did did some years here. Twenty-five, six. Space, but make the idea here. And so then I broke it up into terms. Um. Section, my chart goes a little further, but we just had all the space there. Um, and one of the first goals that I wanted to achieve here is to hit our minimum staffing. That was required. And I kept it to minimum staffing needing full staff. Like what 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 is necessary for the sheriff's office? Uh, to serve Lake County specifically, and to make sure we're hitting all the marks with our statutory requirements. I didn't put an exact number to that one. Reason for that is I wanted to learn each year what what was like there that was necessary to serve the public. And so, started here. And so, if my goal of full staffing is there, this is the the chart that I'm looking at. To uh just kind of keep an eye where we're at constantly. So part part of this goal here is related to the positions that we apply for these grants for. And so although, yeah, come on, come on in. Yeah, it's been a great help uh through this process. Appreciate appreciate that. And so, so we're hereish. You know, this is obviously, uh it more looks like this, as you guys know how grants actually look. So it's been, it's been a roller coaster to get to the point where we're at now. This this final year, what I was looking to do is expose all the positions so we can work towards the end of twenty-six to to achieve those those final positions. The reason why I bring this up is to also for the history factor. And so we have a couple in the room that's been uh with me every step of the way. And what they've seen is an increase in our staffing um goals each year. So it would've been, you know, easy for me to say, okay, we need X amount of deputies uh when I was first elected, and then we just go straight to that. But I realized that that is um basically impossible. You know, we're going through, um, we have a nice pipeline built right now, patrol staff, but essentially that takes. You know, at least a year to get a patrol deputy trained um through a post academy. And also through uh the training program, not including hiring process, it takes about a year. So it's a long time. Uh, to go from three deputies up to where we're trying to get to. And so I set these goals as we progress. So the positions that we applied for fit into this twenty-twenty-six goal. And we were exposed with these these grants that we're gonna talk about today early. Um, they they start April first, so here shortly. And it's and it's for for that calendar, our fiscal year. So this gives us uh early exposure to a couple of the positions that we're looking to gain as part of our long-term plan. So the reason why I kinda show this chart here is just for that reason, that this wasn't something that we were exposed to and thought, oh, we're gonna be a cool idea, let's give it a shot. This kind of fits into our long-term goals of reaching that minimum staffing, and these positions are essential to that. So, um, there's there's more lines on this graph, but we're not jumping across today, but if you're interested, I have a full chart in my office, and it doesn't look much better than that. All that. So essentially, the uh the two grants that we've made a lot of progress on, uh with assistance from finance and Catherine. Um, are grant-specific too. I didn't mean to keep you out of this.
No, you're fine.
Um, the school resource officer. With the school resource officer position, this is something I engaged with the schools on conversation over the past couple of years. Um, I've met with the school board multiple times now, with Kate multiple times. We've actually, at this point, have organized somewhat of a little committee, um, so that SRO position is successful. Um, this is a reputation here in Lake County, although there has been an SRO before. Um, but this is something we're looking at a little differently, where this is primarily a sheriff's office employee. Uh, working in in our schools, in all those schools in Lake County. And then it fits in with school procedures and policies as well, um, that we have a positive outcome, of course. That we're, you know, addressing safety concerns uh within our schools and having somebody more available to respond to any sort of safety concerns. Uh, but also to promote diversity, which is identified in this grant nationally. Um, and and uh just the relationship with law enforcement, kids, teachers. And so through that grant process, uh we've gone all the way to the point of uh being awarded the grant. Um, we still need to go through the county's approval process at this point. The other grant is for an additional patrol deputy. And uh, so so this one is not to any sort of a specific role in the community other than a patrol deputy. And the intention of this grant was to increase staffing, to assist in law enforcement staffing across the state. Um, which were not the only agencies suffering for law enforcement staffing, so this is an effort towards that. Um, just a couple of general notes on the grant, it's um, there's not a federal touch point that we were able to find. And uh, so I know it's a big concern that this money was uh given towards state. And we have gone all the way to the point of being in order for both these positions, and they both start April first, and they have exposure to use these funds. So it would carry over into twenty-twenty-six, prior first quarter, uh which would assist us in our twenty-twenty-six. Budget process where we can still budget for those positions, but from the county fund standpoint, uh we wouldn't. We we don't currently have any grants, and uh there's some reasoning behind that. One is, as I uh said initially, that we had some issues with grants in the past, prior administration. Um, the county has grown significantly in their grant management process, with policies in place now. And even in the sheriff's office, our administrative staff has grown um to the point where we now have Erica, so Erica's joining us today. And uh, so she's focused on the the finance and the grant side of the sheriff's office. Um, which is a hugely important role for our, you know, our loud, larger budget. And uh, then to have somebody who can focus on these grants. And so, um, Erica's done a great job working with Catherine and other county offices to make sure that we're following all these steps. And it was successful, so it was uh, it was pretty cool to see that initial application go through. Uh, for these two grants, they are essentially starter packages for entering these positions. Uh, so that's one of the things that we looked at when analyzing the longer-term financial impact for these. This this gives us that opportunity to uh not only hire, but to fully equip. And as you can imagine, equipping a law enforcement officer is on the expensive side. Um, we can include things like training, uh full group vests, the firearms that are necessary. Uh, body armor, cameras, uniforms, uh this goes on. And this grant covers everything. So one of the the nice things that Erica did was really, she really dove into all those individual line items. And that was part of the request, is so again, so we really have this complete starter package. Um, nice thing about this grant too is it's not a, uh, both these grants are not match required. So it was covered everything without any additional resources. Is it, sorry, is it, is it upfront or is it reversible?
It's upfront.
Also, if it, um. Erica included some staff capacity for managing the grant, so that it covers a little bit of her time, because it requires some um. Tracking of of, you know, hours and and, you know, it's a little bit more labor intensive than some, but that is also covered. So that's actually huge.
I don't understand how there's, this is not from for the sheriff's department. This is for like the state budget. We're about to face huge cuts across the board. How did? How is this available?
I'm, I would have to assume, um, I, you know, have a solid answer to say this is the reason that we were given by uh the state why. Um, there there is a staffing shortage across the state of Colorado when it comes to the law enforcement. Uh, public safety has become a concern uh for the state, and to make making sure that we have those available staff to, you know, to protect our communities. Uh, that's so that's my assumption on on why this this funding is pretty solid. You know, I think it was kind of encouraging too to see the state vote in Proposition one thirty, which dedicated three hundred and fifty million dollars to our state. Specific to train law enforcement for retention and recruitment efforts. So I I do see the state, you see the people of Colorado, seeing the importance of law enforcement. Uh, and you know, it's it's been a hard, you know, past, you know, three to five years in in the law enforcement community. And so those that are still here are are hanging on, cause they realize the importance of these roles. Uh, but now we're starting to see some support. So that's that's what I think is the reason, uh, but I don't have a solid answer.
Lauren, Tim, do you have any sense of why there's so much pausing on state funding? There's so many discussions about cuts and like being careful not to spend. Do you have any idea why this is the?
I mean, I think that's why we said we would like you all to decide on this, is I think some of those cuts could be forthcoming, especially if we, the state is. Being required to put three hundred and fifty million dollars into law enforcement, would the JVC see these grants as like, well, they're getting this money, so we can take this money?
Right.
I, uh, so I don't really.
No, 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 okay.
I'm trying to, well, um.
Is the programs, I think are like originally, they're DOJ funded, like it's a program through the DOJ that funds the state. So.
So that is the federal touch point, is what you're saying?
Well, but I think that it's, I mean, we've been assured that it's state, that it's not, it's not like subject to forms of federal changes, but it's. Um. Are you sure that it's a, it's a? I need, I need to change the details. I I know that like that it's a, it's a, that that's the program that's available in.
I think so.
All states, but.
I don't think they're, um.
So I reached out to the grantor, and the, both the SMART and the LE workforce awards are state-funded for S B H twenty-two, one, four, five.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
Also, that is for, I mean, I'm sure, I guess they gave it the show for uh, they'll apply for like in October.
Yes.
So, I mean, there there was. At the time, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Not as.
I'm just trying to be careful, because there are plenty of funding sources that we thought we have, that we would like to make sure is still true, but like the the. The state has not determined their final budget decisions, and they're way, way over, so I don't wanna get. Like our sustainability coordinator position, I would hate to hire somebody and then be like, oh, that funding is not going. That's why I'm asking.
I I I think law enforcement is a little more solid as far as support across the board, federal and state, than, um. Something that requires more like explanation, like the state.
What's the, the number?
One forty-five, yeah.
Twenty-two, one forty-five.
Yeah.
How long is the grant? How long will it fund these positions?
It's a one-year grant.
One-year.
Yeah, so we. So they're, this state fiscal year.
So ultimately, the question is, do we wanna hire these people and and then take up? If it works, we wanna keep them on, so.
Correct, yeah.
That's really the question, is we're gonna end up funding it.
Same.
Whether that goes away or not, so I'm all in favor of school resource officer. It sounds like there's an equity piece to that, is that?
Um, bilingual.
Oh, bilingual.
That was, I mean, the way we pitched it, because like that.
Yeah.
That that was part of the requirement for the grant, but um, that that this person would be particularly, I mean, specifically bilingual and because. What is it, seventy percent of our, of our school?
Yeah.
Children are um are identified as bilingual, right?
Sounds like it'd be a really tough job, actually.
But it would really, um, I mean, the 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 piece where it's enhancing the relationship.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, early on with law enforcement, like community cohesiveness and stuff, um. Plus, of course, you know, safety and, and that, um, also that that this person could, um. In the summer and otherwise, uh, like extra out of school time could just, um.
Of of the staff.
Be a, yeah, of the staffing, of the of patrol, or whatever, whatever's needed, um. And, you know, again, like what, like what we talked about, it's. These positions are budgeted to happen eventually, so it's, um, we have a good argument for why it's gonna be sustainable after this grant.
How do you determine staffing levels? Is it a population thing, or a crime level, or just a gut feeling or?
Yeah, initially, back in the day, it was, you know, largely, uh, we need, we knew we needed to grow. And so having some local knowledge was very helpful on establishing some initial goals, but then it was diving into numbers. And on the number side of things, there's a couple of different ways we can look at it, is populate like ratios, so we can look at different populations, what's normal. Um, what, and there's some FBI scouts out there that encourage, um, you know, you know, what kind of ratios are necessary for communities uh to explore. Um, and then and then there's, there's the component of officer safety. Um, you know, we're we're smaller, obviously, so having huge staff isn't necessary. But at the same time, I wanna make sure that if an officer at two AM responds to, one of the most dangerous calls we've encountered is a domestic violence situation, especially if there's firearms involved. Cause emotions are high, um, and it's it's involving intimate relationships, so it's just, it's super dangerous. And so if we only have one person on, they have to go walking to that environment solo. Like, so that also becomes a a standard that we look at, is to make sure that we have available, somebody to back somebody up. Um, and not put our community at such a risk of not having anybody available. And this is, uh, so that that's a component. Um, yeah, that's that's important for our total staffing levels. Uh, but then we also look at, just look at what's going on in Lake County. How many calls per year do we get? What, how how are those calls broken up? What I've found, um, on the on the call volume side, is when I began back when I first started, is staffing levels were really low. And so that that wasn't a full representation of how, what the need was. And so really, we've been trying to pursue finding what that need is, not just by population, but by calls. So two of the obstacles we had to overcome was one, low staffing levels, cause we, again, with only three deputies, they can only take so many calls. And what that also produced with other reasons was there's a lack of trust. Um, I remember early on, within the first year or so, connecting with some people. Who are who are who are honestly scared to come to the office to speak with law enforcement. Had meetings uh with me, started to develop a little more trust. And and over time, we've tried to regain that trust, so we are now getting those calls. So we have seen numbers go up. One, because we have more people to respond, so we have that, instead of saying, sorry, we can't do that today, we don't have anybody available, like, okay. One, because we have more people to respond. So we have that instead of saying, sorry, we can't do that today. We don't have anybody available. Like, okay, yes, let's do that. And so we worked on this culture of saying, we may have to prioritize their actions, but there's no reason to say no to a call. And then two, we're getting the trust of both those reasons, we've seen an increase in calls and we've seen an increase in reports. And and so what I'm looking for here, which I still think will take another year or two, is to really find what what what's like kind of normalized for Lake County when it comes to calls. And then and then really, we can dive into those numbers and find out effective ways to start reducing crime. Like that's that's the end goal. One thing I hate about this job is I it's it's very reactive.
Mm hmm.
And when I'm reactive to a call, that means, oh, it was too late. There's a victim. There's damage. There's issues we have to deal with. Um so what we're trying to get to a point is where we can find those numbers. And I realize it takes people to do that at the end of the day. Of course, quality is extremely important for us and we make sure that going to the training and building up staff appropriately. We also need the numbers. And so look at all those reasons to to develop what our full staff should look like. Um and then once we achieve that level, I look at that as foundational for the sheriff's office. And then we can start addressing specific issues that we have in our county in in more of a uh program focused effort on this area of the city. And so.
Are you taking so then are you collecting? Have you been collecting a lot of data about what types of calls you're getting? Like the level of escalation it is, what resources are necessary?
Correct, yes.
After, okay, cool.
Yeah, our um our software really collects everything. And and the other thing that we're working on too, since all since dispatch is the touch point for all these calls that are initiated. The only thing that dispatch doesn't get initially is if the law enforcement officer is proactive in something where they maybe go in to do a business check or there aren't a traffic stop. Other than that, everything well, even those all go through dispatch. So we we work closely with dispatch to make sure that they're hearing the information correctly. So we can have a better view. And that's also taken really years to develop. And you know, a perfect example is let's say we want to know how many D U I's we have. And if the call was entered as a ready report, which is a report every drunk driver immediately. So if you guys see somebody leaving, you know, you call in the cops and say, see, this car's leaving, it's you know, it's a red explorer with these plates. We pull it over, it ends up being a DUI arrest. Um the call could be listed as just a ready report or a traffic complaint. And so so with the thousands and thousands and thousands of calls, we've got to go through and go through all these different calls and and figure out better methods to track those. And so again, that's taken a long time. This is you know, really addressing these things now is important. So we get those actual numbers. We really know what's going on. Does that does that help?
Yeah.
Can you give us a little more background about how it's gone with the school talking about this resource officer? Because it seems like a little different from the way I would expect our schools to
Yeah, that that.
Want to engage.
Right, yeah, I think that's uh part of the reason why it's taken years.
Yeah.
Um is because of you know, I just play it back to the trust factor.
Yeah.
And to make sure that we're doing that thing, you know, the schools are doing going with juveniles obviously. And there's a different code that we have to follow in law enforcement and then they also have their policies and procedures. And and so you know, I I think we've built trust back on how we handle those situations. And working with the schools instead of against the schools or trying to strong arm the schools, which I think they've experienced in the past. And what I mean by that is, you know, uh with violations, whether they're minor or major, how do we handle that? And we want to make sure that we have uh good connection and communication relationships with the schools. So we have an effective outcome for the children is is all of our end goal. And we we establish that as our focus, uh which we have. And that's why we're at the point now where even school board at Cape Bunny, everybody in that crew is on board with making this work. Uh but again, part of that is that we continue that. We actually have our we have a three uh scheduled meetings um coming coming up here pretty shortly. Our first one is um April second and we're going to kick off that conversation. Uh our excuse me, we're going to kick off like the man uh developing the program conversations already started. Um so we're all on the same page. Initially, we are. And so that's a great place to start. Uh also, I if you guys haven't met yet, we have a patrol captain calling. Of course, she came from uh in all these departments. Um she's nationally certified in in the S R O program. Um she's our patrol captain. So we have this key player now in the next second. Engaging with conversations with experience. So I think that's why we're in this process.
And the school is going to be heavily involved in what it actually looks like or will that be determined by the sheriff's department?
No, it's both. It's it's got to be a team effort.
Yeah. I just I just have all these little flags that go up, especially having been, you know, a student in Colorado.
Yeah.
Um where SROs can definitely, depending on how they're managed or who how they're trained, can escalate issues.
Right.
And they can help our juveniles get into the school to prison pipeline so much earlier.
Right.
And I'm sure these are all conversations that you've had before, but I just um I want to make sure that we're also eyes wide open when we are
Right.
You know, saying yes to a grant that would support that in our community.
Right, sure.
I'm sure it can go. I'm sure there are opportunities where it can go well, but if 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 it's not being talked about, that's where I would want to raise the flag.
Oh, yeah. It's yeah, it's been a big part of the conversation.
Good.
Yeah, and and so it it would just be good to bring bring that stuff up and let's talk through that. What does that look like? Um you know, there's 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 some relationships that, yeah, you you know, like I just mentioned earlier with having more law enforcement here, we see stats go up. And you know, that's part of that, you know, the scene stats go up at schools. But our presence there, I I don't I don't see that going up because we're already pretty present in schools and working closely with them. And when we have these issues where there you know, there's you know, they they find a kid with a cigarette or something like that that okay, we're not using the cop to go and write whatever possession ticket. That is silly. Um and and could have lifelong effects on the kids that we actually work through the school through the process. Okay, how are we going to handle this situation?
Yeah.
And so we've we've been involved with the process on reviewing those different cases too. I think that's where part of this trust has been built. Um but I think it's and we both identified that it's extremely important that we find the right person for the job. That's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
You know, we have uh you know, I'll make fun of my my trooper friends because I used to be a trooper. Troopers are just great at writing tickets. And you know, they they love the speeding tickets and then they got their hat down and then no emotion. Having that type of person in the schools wouldn't be appropriate. You know, there's out there scratching tickets, scratching tickets, all of these things.
Mm hmm.
Uh but our but our goal, even even outside the school, we deal with the juvenile, we work with the DA's office on diversion programs uh that were not just automatically arrested or given tickets.
Yeah.
It's just already a practice of ours to to make sure that juveniles. And and the relationship is extremely important to us. You know, I I I want to expose uniformed law enforcement officers to our school in a positive light. And I and I feel like that's key to help with some of those recovery experiences that people have had in the past.
Yeah. I mean, I had an awesome S R O when I was growing up. Um he did all the right things for all the right people. Just I'm just curious because I thought we were moving away from SROs, but.
Yeah, and you know, I think Denver's a great example. We look at what Denver did with their S R O program and they're they're coming back.
Yeah.
So we kind of kind of learned from, you know, their mistakes or their experiments.
Yeah.
You know, with removing uh the S R O program, they saw violence increase, they saw it was more dangerous. And it is very unfortunate that we're you know, the time that we are in right now where you know, my kids and kids that are in school you know, uh have to go through active shooter drills.
Mm hmm.
And it's reality, especially in smaller communities. And it would I would not be able to live with myself if I knew I didn't do as much as possible to prepare for a potential situation for life service. And the S R O position that also fills that concern too. And that's why the right person is so important.
Yes.
Yeah.
Much enough somewhere.
It's a tough situation because there's not a lot of middle ground. It's either you get it really right or the opposite. I don't think there's that much in the middle, you know. So it's a lot of pressure. And I'd be that position of get filling that, you know, being in charge of filling that position. But I get what you're saying a hundred percent. You know, I'd rather um oh I don't see how I'd be able to sleep if you didn't try and get it right, you know. But I I trust you made the right hiring decision. You have some of that's tough, but soft and kind of some psychology and some sort of counsel. Did they get counseling training and it sounds like a huge job to me.
Yeah.
Multi-passionate mentor type kind of.
We can also respond to an active shooter situation.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really complicated position. Yeah.
It is, yeah. I mean, we we struggle to find law enforcement in general in our community.
For sure.
Yeah.
So you know, this this exposes us to the opportunity to pursue it.
Yeah.
Um you know, and I remain hopeful that we can find the right person.
Mm hmm.
Uh but yeah, but you know, and I appreciate the confidence and it is very important to me to find the right person to be patient through that process. Although funds are exposed to us in this grant even at first, you know, it's it's going to take a while to to work through that. And also with the schools to develop, you know, what is the job situation?
Yeah.
He's when you when you look at your budget, the budget of the sheriff's office, then over the next five years, is this all built into your budget currently and this?
No, not for this year. But when I exposed you to our long range planning, correct?
But for the next. Yeah, okay.
These uh the two grants that we have approval on at this point, uh the award letter is uh we plan on putting those in our twenty twenty six budget.
Okay.
Can I ask just a few questions? Um the S R O, is that just going to be intermediate school, high school? Or is there plans to have that person in the elementary school as one?
Mm hmm.
Two, um are there data reporting requirements for the S R O? Just like I would love to see us start getting into like data driven budgeting decisions where we see like, hey, we approved this funding, it's four a year. We're going to look at if we want to backfill it with general fund. Here are the data points that shown that it was a that benefit to our community. So I don't know if the V O C C wants to have input about what that data is so that we can you can come back in your twenty twenty six budget to say so far, this is what we've seen by having this human in our schools. And then three, is there any interest in the school district or splitting that cost with us in twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven?
Okay, yeah.
That's a big that's a big that number three is a big ask.
It's gonna be a no.
Yeah, well, uh yeah, I'll start backwards, I guess. So to to in advance, remind me. Uh but the conversation uh has started a little bit around that. Historically, there has been a split between the city and the county and the school district. So I don't think it's out of question to bring that back in. Actually, I think it should absolutely be brought back into the conversation. Um but as it sits now, this is kind of that opportunity to try it before we buy it fully. Um with overcoming the obstacle, of course, that uh there's grant security concerns of actually receiving those funds. Um you know, and and from my budgeting standpoint, I have budgeted for this to be fully consumed by the county um through my long range plan. So it's a bonus if we get if we get those other departments to um as for data collection, uh we're fairly good at that now with our current systems, just to pull some hard numbers. Um and I would love to hear actually further input on what is important for because I I can decide pretty easily for law enforcement. Like when I look at stats, here's what I want. But I'm definitely curious what people who are not in law enforcement, like what what do you look at as an important number to justify the position? And so I would be curious to hear if there's any input on that. And that doesn't have to be obviously a today thing, but yeah, for the conversations on that. But I think it would be good to, hey, you know, give them the input. Um and the first one, remind me, I'm sorry.
Is it going to be in the or is this person going to be in the elementary school?
Oh, yes, uh uh all schools, um you know, and including um of course, sometimes you do forget about Cloud City.
Cloud City, yeah.
And that's that's part of part of the support too.
Um how much how much trauma informed training do the sheriff's department employees receive?
Um I don't have a hard number for you on that. Um we you know, there's there's certain like we can justify certain state level training that can kind of fall into that realm.
Hmm.
Um we take it a step extra and we work closely with um with somebody locally to to like talk through our wellness type of issues, which helps us work through both, you know, personally and professionally with our response.
Mm hmm.
And then I you know, I don't know if the through the S R O training that we've looked into, if that's one of the items that is taught through that school. So it's a big question after finding a little more information.
That'd be great. I think that my when you when you introduce an S R O, there is already trauma that people experience from law enforcement. It's already there before the S R O gets there. And then the presence of an S R O or law enforcement in general is traumatizing or re-traumatizing or triggering. And so um I would just I would be curious to see how much trauma informed training your SROs or deputies in general receive.
Yeah.
And then I'd like to see like continuing education on that. If you actually want to like move towards healing some of that trauma that communities have with law enforcement.
Yeah, I mean.
That would be my.
Yeah, just firsthand experience with uh with that is um it's very it seems very age dependent. As the kid grows, some of those, you know, they get the older age, they're sixteen and they grew up with negative interactions with law enforcement. It's it's embedded. It's hard to work on.
Right. Right.
Uh dealing with elementary school kids, they're a little hesitant. And this is not to speak for all of them, of course, I'm just speaking uh to to what I've seen with the majority of these different age groups is they're a little more open to that relationship with their former officer and which is encouraging to know like, okay, we you know, it's another reason why I feel like we should start just to start with the younger population, really trying to develop that positive relationship with them, even if they go home and have a negative interaction, meaning like maybe mom or dad got arrested and they have to work through that.
Yeah.
But yeah, great question. We'll talk about it.
Cool, thanks.
Potential grants. Um I always feel like your guys' reach gets really limited once the asphalt stops. Is there anything down the pipeline that looks like it would help you guys access lawlessness on unpaved surfaces and and the further reaches of the county that you guys don't have easy access to?
Um.
Bad actors, Texans on U T Vs dumping trash everywhere, other people who think, you know, the woods are cheaper than the dump and things like that.
I you know, I guess uh so you're just talking about getting into the more rural part of rural uh.
Yeah, like those you know, those explorers definitely don't have much ground clearance and you know. I don't know if the U Con's are much better, but you know, it just seems like we we focus on town and on the streets and you know, a few yards. But once you know, you go abroad, especially if somebody spends a lot of time on O H V, you see stuff that's like, you know, I can't believe how many new vehicles I've already been seeing that are just out in the woods, completely trashed, dumped.
Right.
I'm like, how do we even approach that?
Yeah.
Um and then the other one that I notice with my ears, um and we're in a tough situation because we don't really have any regularly regulatory process for people's assault systems, but the amount of loud cars in the last few years, I I feel like it's quadrupled around town. And um I don't know if there's like a a grant situation where we could have like decibel meters or some sort of you know, equipment added to our our repertoire that would help, you know. Maybe from proactive side, I'd like to do some kind of outreach campaign like, hey, like if your car is super loud, like get it fixed because time's coming when we're going to start cracking down on it and give people the chance to help themselves. But it's crazy like having a conversation out front of this building, especially in the summertime. Like you get interrupted about four or five times every ten minutes or so by you got to stop talking and wait for that vehicle to go by before you can pick the conversation up again. I'm like, how did we get here?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think that so your first question is it's like that's that is quite the obstacle. I mean, thankfully, we're not uh you know, we're we're actually a pretty small county. We just we're just surrounded by extreme terrain. And you know, we we do have a presence um in our on our county roads. Um you know, we've responded to calls on Western Pass, we've taken the vehicles to theirs. We do have, you know, the physical capability of of doing something like that. We've had different search rescue missions where we can touch those planes. But yeah, you're but you're a hundred percent right that we do have to focus on areas that are more concerning. And when we put ourselves out there, let's say on Western Pass, we're hunting a fugee out there and then a call pops up uh in town or something that we have to go to, we have to take that into consideration with response times. It's really the only solution is again, more more staff. It is to so we can feel a little better with spreading people out. Uh and that's I guess these two, part of our staffing goals is to have that predetermined separation on where where people are located or to increase response times. Uh but we do have a lot of help from outside agencies. Another uh relationship that's been ended over the past couple of years is our relationship with Forest Service. Uh even B L M, L E Os are now coming out to help address some of these uh you know, abandoned campers. Um that's quite the game, unfortunately, where the the whole two weeks you can stay here. You've got to do in this game. Uh but they're it's being addressed. And so we and uh and I call our folks along, like, of course, we could have somebody with town now. So these other agencies assist. And so we, and uh, and a caller up close along, of course, we could have somebody with town now, so these other agencies assist. Uh, from a grant standpoint, um, related to that is we we do have a uh, an overtime opportunity with Forest Service. So 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 Control Deputy can work in Forest Service land specifically, and they pay for it from that question. So they they give us money so we can, we can help them. Cause I complain about being low staff, but you have one Forest Service, eight law enforcement officer for uh multiple counties. And so they're really stretched thin. So we we help out when we can in those areas. Um, and then for the loud noise issue, uh, that is a violation of, you're not allowed a modified exhaust period. That's a state violation, so it doesn't even require a decimal reading. Uh, so that is something we can psych somebody for. But I I do like the idea of education instead of just jumping right into violations. Another obstacle that we haven't really quite figured out how to overcome is in that community engagement bit. You know, when it comes to equipment violations, that's something we talked about, is having like an event at the community field. And we can do all kinds of things. We can check a tent, we can check exhaust. Um, we can do a child seat, make sure people are secure in those correctly. We can, you know, we just make sure that we're getting ahead of this.
Cool.
Um, some of the the feedback that we've got is, oh, those are warrant traps. We're we're trying to bring people in so we can hook them and relax people. And so we're trying to overcome that. But then the other obstacle too is a lot of times people know what they're doing is already there. Um, you know, they they go to get their windows tinted somewhere. Usually advised, like, hey, this is illegal tint, they don't, the the tint company doesn't mind that. So if they knowingly are having equipment violation or they've been pulled over before and said, hey, you have to fix your exhaust and all that, have a sort of modified exhaust, then they know it's wrong. And so then now we're in this battle of, you know, notifications, warnings, tickets, you've seen the judge, you've seen the judge. They force it to be removed. So it is something I I don't wanna give up on on the education bit, but those are just some of the obstacles that we've had.
If I may be starry eyed idealist for a second, I think, um, kind of the long term intent of the SRO position. Um, if like starting in elementary school, the kids have a, like a friend who is, you know, I don't, it like might not get there right away, but if they're, they have a law enforcement officer who they trust, who maybe can speak Spanish to their parents, who maybe knows the English. Um, when you have more of that trust and more of a conversation going, instead of like, you know, like he says, like, I'm not gonna go to that event because it's a trap or or I don't care what they're saying or I don't even know that like certain things are illegal. Um, I think if you, you know, build a more positive relationship with the whole community, then, you know, I think, I'm making this up, but I bet crime goes down. Like all crime, like, you know, most lifestyle type of crime, littering and, you know, how to find your car.
It's a very real potentiality, yeah.
What's that?
It's a very real potentiality of of having the right SRO.
I mean, I think that's the objective of the whole program, but also, I mean, as far as grants and stuff go, there's like a remarkable number of like various like weirdly specific law enforcement, um, funding opportunities out there or there, there have been, like, who knows what's gonna happen right now, but, um.
Keith, it feels important to me, um, for our budget cycle next, this coming year, to have as much of your wonderful planning, like like budgetary planning as possible, so you can get up to the staffing levels that you want to over multiple terms. So like, the more information we can have about what that future of the sheriff's office looks like fully staffed, the better we can make sure that everybody is planning for what that looks like. I would really, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that that's been important for me all along to make sure that I'm including those members and I'm staying close, closely in touch with what that actually looks like in presenting that. And uh, and I, and I do, I'm totally fine with jumping into the weeds and say, here's, here's what the initial, you know, projections were. Here's where we're at now, made some adjustments along the way, and here's where we look, look, this is what we look like in two, three, four, five days from now.
Yeah, awesome. That'd be great.
You have created a beautiful org chart that's color coded and a amazing spreadsheet that shows you all that.
Thank you.
The colors match.
I know this is on public record, so I'm gonna say it, but so far, you're my favorite. You're my favorite elected when it comes to finances, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
That's gonna be the most expensive.
You better.
Are you also planning on additional TE for the jail this, like in twenty twenty six? Or would that be a mid-year adjustment?
No, one extra position in twenty twenty six for jail. Yeah, and that's been the biggest one is initially, we were planning for a full jail bill, like a fully operational jail. When I, I mean, we were talking about the Justice Center project. Um, and that's where we're able to pull numbers like this is gonna be an extra millionish dollars a year just to operate a fully functional jail.
Yeah.
And so it's been great to like cut that need down and really, you know, uh, create the detention division that's appropriate for what we do in Lake County, which now we have, um, well, I've been here for nearly three years now. It's three years of experience of what that looks like. And so with this this construction project that we're doing, we're gonna be more efficient with that. We're confident now with what numbers that we need to fulfill those obligations, uh, while still transporting the chief of county.
Yeah.
So we've made the biggest adjustments at that, at that level.
Cool.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Keith.
Yeah, and one one more grant I just wanted to throw out there is, uh, just to start the discussion. I just, I just sent over, I don't know if you guys discussed all the email yet, uh, we sent it over yesterday, actually. Um, was the court security grant. This is a grant that we do have some history with. Uh, we again did, we're not under any grant right now, so that's one we did and we applied for. Uh, and to be honest, when we had it, it was just something that we adopted uh early on, we really applied for. Uh, I wasn't completely happy with the way we were managing it, so we did take that break. And I feel a whole lot better now in managing, um, that additional grant. So that is, um, I believe there was two point five million set aside for security. Um, our, our judicial branch in Fifth has pushed that out to us and and we are listed as one of the pri- uh, uh, what's the word?
Need. Priority, can't we?
Yeah, um, so we're one of the handful in the state that says that this is important for Lake County to have. And so, um, so that's, that's just early heads up on that one. We're looking into that. That's again to cover the position. Uh, we're not looking for uh any equipment outside that's related to the position. And, um, so that that would be, you know, helpful to, of course, security stuff, of course. So that one's, that one's coming down soon. And who we apply, what we, what we're gonna request is for that to fully fund that position. And that, that position also fits into this role here. And so so none of the, those three position grants are outside of what our initial staffing goals are.
So that would be security upstairs. Was there any plan to add security to this door?
That's, that's a joint conversation.
What happened here? I I was going for a while, I mean, dissipate.
Yeah.
That that will be part of the considerations when you meet with the architects next week. So part of the court security is how can you change this foyer, maybe extend it a little bit so the full building is secure? To go upstairs or to come in to this building. So that is part of the renovation discussions.
Well, I'm sure we'll have to move this wall like that way a little bit.
And that way.
And that way.
Let's go and do it that way.
I'm sure. Cool, okay.
Uh, but you could, yes, to, you know, to answer that question, that's, that opens up that opportunity.
Thanks.
I do think I have an answer to your question about the SRO position education wise. For those two trainings, we included two trainings in the grant application. So there's a basic SRO course, but then we take, and then there's an advanced SRO course. Uh, the basic, well, they'll explore relevant public safety topics such as digital safety, human trafficking, mental health and substance abuse. And then they'll also go over how to de-escalate a situation, um, behavioral threat assessments, emergency operations planning and armed assault response. And then the advanced one is, um, advancing the SRO's knowledge and skills as law enforcement officers in from informal counselor and educator. I don't know if that answers the question.
I'm still curious, but I bet the school board is too, so I trust, I trust them to ask the right questions too. Thank you.
Yeah, we do plan on, uh, using this school connected committee to assist with development for job description, to assist with the hiring process, so they they all have input on selecting the right person. Any other questions related to these grants? I'll, I'll, I'll connect with one on trauma informed training. I think that's something that maybe slightly touched on in some of those points, but not like fully, and that's.
Yeah.
Curious what the school does too.
Yeah, me too.
That's just something that they have their regular training that SRO joins.
I'm super curious. Special needs, like there are a lot of kids with special needs who tend to get like de-escalated in inappropriate ways.
Yes, yeah, especially with handling youth as good as handling adults.
That's right. That's right.
But yeah, great question. If there's anything else that pops up, happy, just reach out to me.
Thank you, Keith.
Be happy to provide your answers.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
You're gonna have a good day.
Thanks again. I know this trick. Kind of going to the.
I, yeah.
The landfill.
It's a landfill. I should be back in time for one P M, but.
Are you gonna see Michael?
Oh, you're seriously going to the landfill?
Yeah. I gotta take.
It's gonna be a important business.
I wasn't gonna. I wasn't gonna call in a favor and say they'd let me in tomorrow when I was just so.
Do you not meet with Michael or?
No, you owe me two.
Well, I I would like to pursue my idea of melting the soccer field with our ground.
Lawrence working on it.
You guys, she said, she said, no, after the turf was replaced last year, the contractor warranty would be voided. We put snow removal equipment on the field. We public works and pros were told that we could not remove the snow from the field anymore. Do not have a way to help melt the snow. It's warming up and the snow is already coming off.
Well, that's not snow removal equipment, that's a ground thaw heater.
Yeah, but it, it, the weight of it is from what I understand, weight is a problem. So, um, yeah, the.
Well, the heater sits on the track and it it runs a coil. So that's how we do it in construction to thaw the ground so that.
How does that work on syn- synthetic material though?
Well, it heats it to a hundred and ten degrees and that's no water.
Like, could it?
Just melted hot?
Could you melt it or something like?
I just, I just don't wanna do anything that's.
Well, it's the.
Would be more dangerous.
Yeah.
Warranty.
It's a very, that's a million dollar, yeah, future.
It's basically warm water, it's warm panty freeze through it, through a hose.
Yeah, thanks, Catherine.
It gets laid out like this and it would actually thaw the ground, which would help melt the snow. I'd be, in my opinion, totally a non-invasive way to melt that snow. That's my opinion. I'm no turf expert, but we use it on grass and gardens and soil.
We can certainly follow up to see like what water would not impact our warranty.
Yeah.
Check with the.
I'd like to check because it sounds like a dismissal, like, no, we can't do it. It's it's equipment, it falls under equipment without thinking about.
Kind of what the impact is, you know.
Is that maybe a really quick, it's just a hose.
Yeah.
And it would lay on top of it.
It seems like shoveling would be worse for the field, you know.
That's what I'm, especially with some kids or teenagers or people chipping it.
Yeah.
And that's why they won't allow that either.
How about those spurs? You're not allowed to shovel it anymore, either?
I don't think so.
I think we might be able to shovel it. I think the issue was they took like a backhoe.
Plastic?
Why are they shoveling?
Yeah, yeah.
And they broke basically everything, um, so.
Something like four wheeler plows were allowed and, no. Well, they had track, they had, uh, tracked vehicles with plows, I saw them.
Yeah, they had to rent that. It was expensive.
So we can follow up, no problem, to see what is and what is not allowed and just get that explicitly in writing out.
How about, uh, starting a brainstorm about how else to do it, like renting some giant fans from KW and just put them on one side of field and letting all that wind every day help evaporate some snow.
Where everyone could show off their ice fishing tents for a couple days. So they could right next to each other. I mean, you put ice fishing tent out at night.
Oh, he'd ride it, uh-huh.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, so with clear plastic, the solar.
All right, yeah.
Clear plastic would not.
Show off your green house.
I hate to give up, I hate to tell all these people, eh, we we can't help it, just wait for it to melt, cause.
That's awesome, Matt, cause that's always what the answer has been.
They're begging for some help.
We can find, it's not that hard to email them to be like.
Tell them, tell them we want a ground thaw heater. And that, I don't know if you, if you guys understand, it's not like a big heater that sits, it's a hose, a warm water hose.
Right. Yeah.
And we could rent.
It's a gradient pouring.
Then rent them all day long. You get the amount of hose you need, we could do like twenty yards at a time. We could make it go faster with concrete, like it's over the top of it, that would hold all that heat in. I imagine a couple days of that film running, it would just, we'd just do twenty yards at a time. And then once the ground is thawed and the snow is gone, it's not gonna hold snow. We could have that.
It'll go a lot faster.
We could have that big thirty inch storm and we'd be back to square one, but it's, it's worth considering and trying, at least try something.
Might have to patch or run off.
The exact term is ground floor heater?
What's that?
The exact term is ground floor heater?
The ground thaw heater.
Ground thaw.
And the heater, it's just a big trailer with a big generator on it, sits off to the side on the track.
It's like a thauzeal.
And it's just this like giant house.
A thauzeal?
Thauzeals, that's what they're called.
That's kinda love that.
It was XL, XL house. But I don't know if that's how they work is with the hose.
Yeah, Dan would, Dan would probably know about it, cause they've got to thaw ground to get the underground lines and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen the trailer before, but I've never seen it like in action, so I don't know exactly how it works, but.
If not, then we'd have more momentum in doming communities.
You're right.
Watch out.
I know, watch out. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go over calendar real quick for next week. It should be pretty quick.
Again, not a big week next week, when's the schedules?
Um, it's, no, next week is a lot, it's not, a lot more mellow than this week.
Didn't they just add something on Monday that had you?
Uh, yes, so it sounds like we're adding a special on Monday. Liz says that she would take care of that, so we'll make sure and get it on the, um.
Nine to ten?
Something like that, I believe so, so I'll, I'll get with her and make sure that we get it posted. Um, so that is all, um, for Monday. Um, on the first, on Tuesday, we have the regular meeting from eleven to two.
That's gonna be fun.
Commissioner Elsa will be in her office from two to four. Uh, Childcare Coalition monthly meeting is from five thirty to seven. And City Council has their regular meeting from six to eight. No, you're fine.
What's jumping out at you about the April first, regular meeting, it's gonna be extra fun? Oh, we got our neighbor coming in again and, uh.
It's a big, it's a big one. You've got fifteen agenda items.
We could do it all.
Prepare, prepare.
Okay.
It won't be as bad as today, though.
We've got the sustainability position, we've got, uh, the corners facilities. Do your, do your meditation and you have.
Resolutions, some CPD, some CPD stuff.
And your homework.
Um, yeah.
It's a lot to read through.
Um, okay, April second, um, Community Coffee from eight thirty to ten. Uh, work session, I believe this year Legislative One, nine thirty to ten. Um, the, um, extra work session, we've had it on Wednesdays from ten to eleven. And again, Elsa will be in her office from one to three.
Yeah, awesome. Please really do appreciate that.
All right. See y'all, office hours.
Assign a lot of things. Assign a lot of things.
Oh, yeah, thank you, bless you.
No problem.
My reoccurring check signing, the schedule block out stopped reoccurring for some reason.
Oh, no.
I had it set to like infinity and it just stopped doing it. So when I got the call from Sandra, she's like, what you doing? I'm like, I'm on chairlift. She's like, oh, you're gonna sign that, so I'm like.
Nikki and I were sitting outside of your, outside of your office.
I almost like jumped off the chairlift right there. I was like, you're going to my club? No.
It's like, it's fine.
I was, I was right there. It was not a problem, no problem.
This is the easiest thing to do.
Thursday, the third, uh, this is all we've got going on, so nothing for you guys unless you have anything on your calendars that I missed.
But it wasn't paycheck week, which you get the stat. And I'm, I'm.
It was just a couple of emergency things, yeah, so.
You guys gotta really start with when your direct deposit thing.
Sorry.
I get satisfied, I'm gonna have.
Sorry, man.
It's too less.
You love paper checks, huh? Have to look at it, touch it.
Right, it's a real thing, right?
I like to go to the inbox and be like, ooh, did I get a check?
We don't get mail otherwise.
I know, I'm old. I'll, I'll do, I'll have, I'll take care of that and.
It's okay. It's like a, anyway, it's a good thirty minutes or so, just. But my signature's getting better though. It's getting like a step more started.
Need a higher signature.
A stamp.
A little machine that.
No, I'm.
They're using the president's.
I'm morally opposed to that.
Uh, Friday, the fourth, all we have is Twin Lakes Community Coffee and E nine one one authority has their regular meeting from ten to twelve. So that about wraps up next week as of now. Um, yeah, let's start from there.
Special.
Okay?
Okay.
Looks good?
So good.
Alright.
I should tell you guys, my daughter has her last concert tonight at seven P M.
Awesome.
And I thought about it really hard and I decided I'm too busy to go to that race series. But I think it's seven to eight and I think the real meat will probably start for us around eight.
Uh, the work session tonight is from six to eight.
Six to eight.
Or six to nine.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be like nine thirty.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be later than eight.
So I'll come.
No, I have the itinerary. It's, it's lengthy, yeah, six to nine.
I'll send a note to Lori, uh, and then just let her know if you guys wanted to say, and the reason that he's not here is it's her last concert in, uh.
Good day.
Yeah, you're up to it.
Yeah.
Good day, yeah.
And she's awesome, so she was good. I would be like.
You won't tell her you said that.
Yeah, they're probably.
It's all, yeah.
Thank you for the line. It's been funny. Okay, so you guys wanna?
That's awesome.
I appreciate your honesty, the willingness.
You guys wanna wrap up your, wrap up your work session?
Yeah, uh, twelve oh seven P M, we are concluding the, the today's work session in Lake County DOC C.
Cool. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Matt, I think it's awesome you're going.
I could've said all that after you.